If you're willing and able, if you would, stand for an invocation and please remain standing if you're able and capable for the pledge of the flag.
Dear Lord, we meet here tonight to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfall of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing 6:30. Will the regular council meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, January 21st, 2014, come to order? I understand we have some, two amendments to the agenda. If somebody would move, we have one amendment, resolution request and authorization to place signed tarps on streets, names signed within the elects by the community, and that would, if the board approves that, it would be 11C on your agenda. And also, we have District Two would like to make an appointment to the zoning advisory board, and that would be item 12F, if somebody would want to move to accept the agenda as amended with these two items.
So moved.
We have a motion from District Five.
So moved.
Have a second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing, I'm showing five votes, I'm now showing six. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize presentation of Safe Driving Award, Cheryl Matthews, Community Development Division Director.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Certainly, my name is listed on the agenda to present, but I certainly don't want to take these accolades from our transit director who retired on this past Friday. He is here in the audience tonight, and I certainly don't want to put him on the spot, but certainly want him to be a part of what I consider to be a great honor for some of our employees that are being recognized by our Transit Department. So, at this time, Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask David Williamson to join me at the podium to recognize his employees. Again, thank you so much for affording us an opportunity to present to the board this evening. This evening, we have 18 transit drivers who we want to recognize for the previous 2013 year. These drivers have, are being recognized for having no preventable accidents in 2013. That's certainly an honor for these employees because, as you all may not know, our transit drivers are up, starting about 6:00 AM every morning, and at 5:00, when a lot of us are leaving work, they're still on the roads, making sure that they're transporting every citizen in Henry County who wants to get from point A to point B somewhere in the county. So certainly want to recognize these employees, and certainly are very, we're very happy and pleased with their accomplishments. So, we'll call the employees forward and afford them an opportunity to have a photo op with the board. Okay, the employees are Tammy Austin. Dwayne Hunter. Susan Karensen. Priscilla Raming. And again, Chairman and Board members, these bus drivers have driven approximately 26,512 miles during the year, and again, did not have any preventable accidents throughout the entire year. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to recognize a presentation regarding Patrick Henry statue, Mr. Andy Davis, the artist.
Some sort of a cable, so we had to take my mic and put it under this fellow up here, but it's working pretty well. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you Commissioners. I'm Andy Davis. For those of you that may not be aware, we are going to present the contributors of the Patrick Henry sculpture, which are mostly by private contributions, are going to in turn dedicate and give the great county of Henry, an eight-foot tall, 900-pound bronze sculpture of Patrick Henry. I have done the same thing with other sculptures. I've never really kept count of them, but there's, oh, karaoke. I have never kept count of them until just a few minutes ago, and there are nine of them in the state of Georgia that are historical markers. I never really realized that because I really don't, artists like myself really don't create artwork for our own gratification. We really don't. In fact, most of us work alone. I've got a couple of part-time employees, and I would just prefer to be left alone to do my job. And then, when the artwork is created, the artist gives it to the world, and they really do. Very seldom, too, does an artist have the opportunity to have artwork in his own hometown, and it has been very difficult. The Ray Charles sculpture was $2.8 million. This sculpture's right at $80,000. The Ray Charles sculpture took a year and a half, this one took three years. So, but it just, but what I told everybody in the beginning, it doesn't matter how long it takes, I won't stop till I get it done. And once that sculpture is installed, it's there for eons of time, for generations, like cave writings on the walls, where somebody like myself that either went on the hunt and came back and drew it to tell future generations what was important and what was not important to them. I'm gonna do just a very quick presentation. I told Chairman that I'd be about 10 minutes, if that's okay, and I won't go over that. This is my studio, it's on the south side of McDonough, right by the railroad tracks. It used to be an old cotton gin, it was a dilapidated old thing, and I've been working on it every day as I build my life and my career and do what I love doing, and it's one of the most beautiful spots to me that there is. There's just another picture there. We're gonna, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go back this way. Right here is towards the end of the sculpture, and I like to show the beginning, the end and work to the beginning because the end hasn't happened yet. The ending will be the unveiling of this sculpture. Right here, my assistant and I, Rachel Williams, we had already finished the sculpture about several weeks before this, and the foundry comes to the studio, makes a rubber and plaster mold that'll leave a negative of my clay original. And this is Patrick Henry, and he's giving his "Give Me Liberty or Give Me Death" speech, which he did at 29-years of age with the warrant of death over his head by King George's attorney at St. John's Church in 1775. And he still went that day and gave that speech when he knew that he could be killed. But what happened was, is King George underestimated his American tenacity, and King George tried to checkmate Patrick Henry, but checkmate did not happen because Patrick Henry stood and gave a verbal masterpiece and began the birth of the American Revolution. Patrick Henry was also, served four terms of governor in Virginia. Here again is another sculpture, I mean, going towards where the beginning of the sculpture took place. Back there in the background is the Vincent Van Gogh sculpture that's gonna go at the Van Gogh Museum in Amsterdam. I like the dramatics of that. Again, that's where he's beginning to put on the thicker wax. This was about, he had been there for several days. That's Patrick Henry's right hand. This sculpture, which leads me to tell you this, this is gonna be the only sculpture of Patrick Henry in the world outside of Washington DC, and it's gonna be the only sculpture of Patrick Henry anywhere in the world of him giving his "Give Me Liberty or Give Me Death" speech. A lot of people don't know that. And in his right hand, he was holding a, an alabaster letter opener that he pointed to his heart when he said "Give Me Liberty or Give Me Death." Here it is, the first few layers of rubber, there's hundreds of them on there. You can still see the blood vessels in the hand. This is the truit, Kathy, I'll get back to that, we're gonna pass that. Here's Rachel, my assistant, finishing up some of the ruffles. You can see the tendons in his left hand. I've used that sculpture of an older gentleman's hand, even though that he was, Patrick Henry was only 29, I wanted it to be more demonstrative, to have bigger blood vessels, to have bigger tendons. So art, so art often does not imitate life at all, if somebody asks you that question. Oftentimes, life imitates art. And we're just really, literally just finishing up, she's putting her initials on, and that's me putting my initials, sign in the left foot, y'all can see that, and I hope all y'all come to the unveiling. Now, moving on, here, this is about a day before the unveil, the day before the foundry came. I'm gonna go ahead and end the pictures there because the rest of it is just other sculptures that I've done, and really, that isn't what I'm here to do. At this point in time, the, we're proposing that the sculpture be unveiled on March the 22nd. I would hope that some of you would write that down. It's gonna, the Patrick Henry's family is gonna be there, Fox News in New York is gonna be there, it's gonna be a pretty big event. Most of these, usually, there's 1,000 to 6,000 people at these unveilings of these particular types of sculptures. And that's gonna be a Saturday, and I am propos, and that is the anniversary to the day that Patrick Henry in 1775 made a speech at St. John's Church in Virginia. So it's gonna be an important day. The other thing is, too, is where we are proposing to put this sculpture is, well, you can't see that, but let me try this. Y'all see how well-prepared I am? This is, this right here is the north side of the square. This here goes towards Jackson. This is the turn that goes towards, if you go straight, this is, this is the highway, and this is where the visitor's center. There's some steps, this is the courthouse. Right here is a Patrick Henry historical marker. I bet hardly any of you have ever read it, but it's there. Right beside it, catty-cornered, about 10 feet behind it, between here and here is about 22 to 23 feet, there's gonna be a pedestal that's put up that's four feet by four feet, and Patrick Henry's gonna sit on that sculpture, and that's where we're proposing.
Where's the flag?
The flag, Tommy, is right, is right over here, I ran out of paper.
Okay. You wanna draw, you wanna draw a piece of paper?
Just kidding, Lee.
You just want to be talking to the officials.
Yeah, we do good with pictures.
Is there anything else I need to do? Does anybody want to ask any questions? And by the way, the sculpture is, it's at the foundry, it's already being cast, we're only short probably about $6,000. We have to get that in, and I'm not, this isn't for asking money, I'm just letting everybody know that if we do, I'll go ahead and put the rest of that in because I've already reduced the amount of price that, you know, for my casting fees. So it's okay, so it's 100% chance gonna get done. It's already, it's already almost finished at the foundry, and Tommy, and Commissioners, what I'd like to offer, too, is when they start casting this, let me come back so that everybody can see the casting process take place. I think that they would enjoy it, if y'all can take the time, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Anybody else, anyone have any questions?
No.
If not, I think a motion would be improper to allow this to be placed in front of the, between the old courthouse and the annex. It's county property, and they would have to get approval, and I would suggest that we consider it. We have a motion from District Four to approve this be placed on the county property, have a second from District One. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, thank you. Next, we have consent agenda. The following agenda items shall be considered on a consent agenda. Resolution request approval of the CDBG Program FY13 Public Facilities Improvement Subreceipt Agreement for the City of Hampton. B, resolution requesting acceptance of a donation from Tanger Outlet Mall. That was the amount of, I think it was $500. Resolution request approval to declare certain county property held by the Police Department as surplus and authorize the disposition of said surplus. And D, resolution request approval to renew the annual maintenance contract with DocuWare for Electronic Document Management for the IT Department. If someone would move to accept the consent items. We have a motion from District Three to approve consent items. We have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we would recognize the Henry County Development Authority website branding and marketing initiative. The presenter will be Mr. Bob White, Executive Director of the Development Authority. Mr. White and group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with me is Mr. Ben Wright, and I'll introduce Mr. Wright in just a few moments, but on behalf of the Development Authority, and I have one of our board members, Mr. Charles Smith, in the audience with us tonight, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight to present to you an actual, another unveiling. This is the formal introduction of a new major marketing website and branding initiative for the Development Authority and for Henry County. As many of you will recall, in 2011, the Development Authority commissioned a study to look at our targeted industries that we're using in our marketing and efforts to recruit industry to Henry County. We'd asked our consultants, Market Street Services, to look at the industries we'd been targeting and to make recommendations as to whether to include those, continue, or to add new target industry sectors. But one of the additional things that we did as part of that process, but was beyond the target industry study, was to ask them to look at our website, to look at our marketing efforts, and to make recommendations on how we could improve what we're doing. Our website was initially put together with the assistance of our IT department, Skip Floyd, and we really were proud of the effort that we put into it, but it was a very low-cost initiative for us and did not have a number of the features that modern economic development websites do have. And websites are really the number-one marketing tool for communities and states. It is the first line for companies, for consultants, who are looking at potential sites for location and relocation, to start their search, and quite often, communities can be eliminated without them even knowing about it on the basis of information or the lack of information on the websites. So, we ask, again, the consultants to look at, at us, look at that process, and be very critical on recommendations on how we can improve that, that process. Some of you were involved in that process a couple of years ago with the focus groups that we had and the community input sessions that we had. But in moving forward from that, thanks to your support and your long-term support for the Development Authority and for economic development in the state, the Development Authority and a team from the Development Authority and myself looked at the top economic development marketing website and branding companies, literally in the country. We wanted to go beyond just the basic, we wanted to have truly an exceptional website that was not only recognized and outstanding from that standpoint, but really puts us among a singular group of leading economic development organizations and chambers in the country. We also asked, looked at those efforts to develop marketing strategies for us and to make specific recommendations to help develop new collateral marketing materials, and to really give us a focus on our, our economic development marketing efforts and to approve that. Again, we looked at the top economic development, marketing and website development organizations in the country, and the team from the Development Authority researched and identified six major national firms that did specialize in economic development marketing, economic development websites. And we developed a request for proposals that was submitted to these companies, and a team from the Development Authority evaluated those proposals, made recommendations to the full board, and the full board accepted the recommendation of the team and accepted Atlas Advertising in Denver, Colorado, as our vendor for this prospect and for this project. And we're very excited today to, again, be formally rolling out this new major marketing initiative for the Development Authority and for Henry County. We started today with focus groups in Atlanta among the statewide economic development community and the brokerage and development communities in Atlanta. We'll continue this tomorrow. I understand with conversations with Commissioner Barham and Holmes and a few of the rest of you that you may not have received our invitation last week, so tomorrow, we'll be doing a series of focus groups here in the County Administration Building with local leaders, both elected, appointed, and business leaders from the, throughout the community, here in the executive conference room, in two sessions that will accommodate people's schedules, at 9:30 in the morning and at 12:30, and these sessions will last about an hour, an hour and a half, but we'd very much like your participation in one of those sessions to give us your thoughts and your goals and your ideals for how Henry County should be portrayed in our attempts to attract new industry. I'd like to introduce Ben Wright, who is the CEO of Atlas Advertising. Again, we look very critically at major firms, and Atlas Advertising really stood out, not only from the body of work that they had done, they had represented more than 100 communities throughout the nation in various marketing website development projects. And over the last decade, their communities that they had developed websites for won major national awards from the Industrial Economic Development, the International Economic Development Council and other major groups. The creativity that they employed was very evident, and also their strategy, how they went about the process, the accountabilities that they bring to the table, really separated Atlas Advertising from the rest. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Wright, we have other members of his team here, Cassandra Lindstruth and Lucy Bowman, no relation to, we don't think, Commissioner Bowman, but Lucy is, and Cassandra are here with us as well. But introduce Ben Wright to tell a bit more about the, the process that we'll be going through over the next several months. Ben?
Quick question, you can continue.
Yes, sir.
I like the idea of rebranding Henry County via website. However, what I would like you to do before we move forward, because this is just one tool in the toolbox, if you can discuss other ways the Development Authority is working to attract new industry to Henry County, that would be great.
We'll be glad to do that. We, we've been implementing many of the recommendations from the target industry study, but we've had a longstanding economic development marketing initiative. With relatively small staff and budget, we have focused on working with the statewide economic development community, with the brokerage and development community, with site-location consultants. It's really the relationship marketing that, that is, is the key to our efforts in the past. The Development Authority is a body that was created by an amendment to the Georgia Constitution back in 1967, but our members are appointed by you, the members, the numbered districts of the Board of Commissioners, and we're a public entity, our meetings are held here in the County Administration Building the first Thursday of each month. We are budgeted, thankfully, by the Board of Commissioners for our operating budget, and we have been very successful representing Henry County and attracting new business and expansions of existing industry, but we felt that we could take it to another level, and that really led us to this initiative to, to move forward with the marketing. So, be happy to address any questions you might have, but I'd like for Ben to tell us a little bit about the process that we'll be going through, what their view of this is, and how Atlas Advertising is gonna help Henry County and the Henry County Development Authority market itself.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ben Wright with Atlas, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's a, it's a pleasure to be here. This is what I, I would do for fun if I wasn't working, and luckily, I get to do a lot for fun because this is what I do for work. So, I wanted to introduce you a little bit to my firm, but also talk specifically about what, what our scope of work is and what to expect, and I think, most importantly, how you should hold this process accountable. I think that's something that, that we believe in a lot. So, we're Atlas Advertising, and we do things like this, which is a, a great website for community Richmond, Virginia. Ironically, the, the Patrick Henry statue is something, Patrick Henry has tremendous background in, in Richmond, obviously, and great history there, so we're able to adopt that kind of approach to tell a story about a place, and that's what we did in Richmond. We also employ modern technology. Businesses today look at communities comparatively, so this is, one of our clients is the state of Ohio, and this is a map that enables people to not only find 17,000 different properties in the state, but also overlay meaningful information about how to choose locations. We work in places like Omaha, Nebraska, not only because Peyton Manning likes to use the word Omaha, and we're from Denver, but because we love Omaha. Omaha's a surprising, wonderful place that, that happens to be home to one of the world's richest men. We also employ very specific metrics, so our, one of our clients is the Tennessee Valley Authority, and what you can see here is a heat map of actual website usage of what people are doing on the website. So, the, the very bright areas are the places that they're clicking, and in this case, this is Find Properties. So, we host about 5,000 properties in the Tennessee Valley region, which comes within about, you know, probably, probably an hour of here. We also help get our clients' exposure while maximizing, or I should say, maximizing their budget effectiveness, so our clients can be found in sites like the Wall Street Journal, the New York Times, and only have to pay for the clicks that they get. This is an era, not just of websites, but of mobile devices. By 2015, half of the traffic on the internet is gonna be on mobile devices like this, so the website that you've purchased, along with other marketing efforts, are all gonna be optimized for the mobile era using something called responsive design. We work in places like Charleston, South Carolina, where access to ports and access to drive times are an important part of the story for relocating companies. Okay, so all that's, that's nice, but what do they lead to? What's, what's the point? Why, why are we here? Well, it, it leads to local recognition, it leads to 10 awards in 10 years, it leads to relocations. Yahoo moved to Yahoo moved a facility to Omaha. We helped write the proposal to get Yahoo there. But why? Because we believe economic development makes a difference. This is a profession that Bob knows well. He's well-tenured here. It's a profession that's often misunderstood, but it's something that, done right, can make a tremendous difference in your community. So, we've worked with a number of clients, we've won awards, all that, all that's fantastic, but I think what matters more and what we hope you expect is that we make a difference here in Henry County. So, let's talk, let's talk a little bit about that and how we're going to do it. So, there's a lot of debate about, you know, what's the role of the Internet? And I think you're probably asking the question. All the Internet does for communities is help drive conversations. That's it. About 90% of business location starts online, but it never ends there. This is not a, you know, unlike the Amazon company where you can buy something and something shows up at your house, businesses don't make location decisions online. They make location decisions by finding communities online, eliminating communities online, and then talking to three to five communities and people like Bob. So, our goal, and one of the things that really drives what we do, is we think our job is to drive conversations with your economic development staff, with the county government, which will then be converted into jobs and capital investment. So, to give you a little bit of data, one of the, because we've worked in enough communities and talked about being accountable, one of the things in our history that we found is, we started wondering, what are good results? What's good, what's bad? What should we expect? What we found, and I'm a teacher of economic development marketing for the International Economic Development Council, also at Georgia Tech, there wasn't any industry standard. There was nothing. So, we actually did the first study of outcomes for economic development. So, one of the things that I would share with you is this is the average day in the life of an economic developer in the United States. Actually, we have information from more than six countries, but here are the metrics that happen for the average EDO. Every day, there are 98 visits for the average economic development website, 98. Every other day, there's a new conversation with a company, every other day. Every day, there are five, an average of five jobs announced in a community and 900,000 capital investment. So, we get a lot of different reactions from this, but this is what goes on in the world of economic development every day. And it's not to say that Bob is announcing five jobs every day or having a press conference every day, but on average, if you average out every business day, that's the average. Okay. So, how do we, how do we leverage this to the benefit of this community? Because that's what we're here to do. We're proposing three phases under this contract. One is research, which we started today and will continue tomorrow, where we get to know the community and we get to know what makes it unique. Then we test that nationally with site selectors, who are consultants that help advise companies about where to locate. We then come back to the community and present that information. We then develop a brand that includes, so this is getting to the Commissioner's question about what else, other than a website? A logo, which just carries the Henry County name, but for economic development, for business growth. A tagline. We do brand, so the Patrick Henry concept we did for Richmond is an example of brand development. And then we develop brand standards, so the brand can be used effectively and consistently across different mediums. In Phase Three, we do what we're calling marketing platform building. So, it's a marketing strategy focused on digital, in this case. It's maps, so like the maps that you saw of Charleston. How do we, how do we tell people where Henry County is located, not just in relationship to this metro area, but in relationship to the southeast, to the Florida markets that it serves, from a distribution standpoint, and so on and so forth? Its relationship to the port. We're developing content for that website, too. So, how are we talking to companies? Developing specific microsites for each industry, for industries, optimizing the website for search engines, and building the website itself. So, what remains, and what you have at this point is you've got a great platform, and you've got a platform that's unique, that talks about the community's strengths, that's targeted to business growth, and complements the efforts that you've been doing. And that sets the stage for long-term execution that'll help you get the results. So, what results should you expect? Please let me know if that doesn't come through on your screens. Is that readable for you? Okay. So, part of our research says, well, communities of this size, of your population, should expect 112 conversations per year, 737 jobs announced, and 330 million in capital investment. So, this is the, this is the reason we're here. And we'll be going through these metrics with staff, with decision-makers to say, is this what we want to, this is the average? Are we, are we, are we shooting for the average? Are we shooting above average? Are we shooting conservatively? And in each community, it's up to the main decision-makers to decide. Our job is to show you what similarly-sized communities do, and that's what we hope that you expect from us. So, that concludes my prepared remarks. I look forward to any questions and look forward to talking to as many of you as we can while we're here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask, Ben, one of the things from a branding standpoint is that the world's changing so fast. You know, in the past, as a planner for communities, we worried about infrastructure, like, you know, where you were to the interstate. But if you read books like The Rise of the Creative Class and other things, I know people who are under 50 years of age, location's not as important as it once was. You see more and more entrepreneurs that are not tied to any location. I know in my business, we have clients in 26 states. I can live wherever I want to, because our clients are all over the place, and that's what most of our clients are like as well. How do we, one of the branding things, because I want the big score. Bob knows, believe me, I want the Caterpillar, the Microsoft Data Storage Units, but I also want to attract the entrepreneurs or the small companies that might employ five to six people, who, how do we go recruit and say, because I have a lot of clients up in Boston, I have clients in California, and their cost of living is through the roof, you know, so their housing costs, you know, their housing cost is three to four times what ours is here. They can come here to Georgia, have incredible climate, live like a king, because our housing cost for something that you'd pay a million dollars for out in California or up in Boston might only cost $250,000 to $300,000 here. Is there a way to kind of brand that or market off of that to try to encourage some of these people to consider, you know, migration for a better quality of life, you know? And I've never seen anybody market off that, but it ties into where trends are going with the younger generations, you know, the 30- and 40-year-old entrepreneurs who don't have to be tied to a community. Is any thoughts on that, on something that we could, we could tie into that?
Commissioner, that's, these are things we think about every day, and I hope I give a short enough answer for this, for this group. But the, what's interesting, I live in a place that's number two for attracting young workforce in the U.S., according to surveys, where they want to live, and that's Denver. Unfortunately, Denver is not number two in actual attraction of that workforce. So, what's the difference? They want to live there, but they don't. The difference is Denver doesn't have jobs like Atlanta does. So, there's another book I would encourage y'all to read. It's called The Coming Jobs War, that really speaks to, it's by Jim Clifton, who's the CEO of the Gallup Organization, and their research worldwide said that jobs is the number-one thing, above health, above family, above faith in the world, that drives happiness today. And it, we can argue whether that's the right thing or the wrong thing, I don't know, but the cities like this region that have jobs are workforce attractors. There's no doubt. Anyone that's been in this, this area for 50 years can say that there's a magnetism here, which is a great asset. The other thing that's gone with that is companies, companies used to move, when a company moved, they took everybody. They took right down to, to, right down to the secretary and the clerical staff. Today, they might move a few key people, but their goal is to hire people locally. And so, what that means is the number-one thing they're looking at is your talent pool, it's your workforce. And so, part of marketing a place is very much marketing the character and quality of the workforce. In fact, that's in addition to location factors that are more traditional, especially for distribution or healthcare or other industries, talent is at the top of the list.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner, one of the things, Commissioner Holmes, one of the things we've been talking about for some time was finding a way to draw attention to the geographic areas of our county. It may be the cities in the county. While the Commissioner Districts are very important to you guys, they're not necessarily recognized by other people in there, but having a way for Stockbridge, for McDonough, for Hampton, for Locust Grove, and for other communities like the Fairview area that are growing, to have an identity and also to have information on our website that you can read about that. So, part of what the microsite development doing, in addition to the target industry specific information in there, we'll be having information that is community-focused on those different things, and that's really the people and the places of Henry County that will really be trying to draw attention to and for the entire county, not just for the industrial areas and the other things of that nature. So, that's a big part of what we're doing. And Commissioner Preston, to your point, about a dozen years ago, there was a major initiative to try to attract talent to the Atlanta area. There was a time, not that many years ago, that one out of every 10 jobs that was being created in America were being created in Georgia, and many of those in the Atlanta area. But we had a tremendous brain drain. We were turning out tons of engineers and other technical people that did not have the jobs here, so they were going to Silicon Valley, they were going to Highway One corridor in Boston, they were going to DC area and other types of things like that. So, there's a major effort to try to bring that talent back into Georgia and to do that. So, I think that's a part, really, of that brand, is a part of identifying the character and the characteristics of a community. There's a lot to be told about Henry County. There are a lot of reasons for people coming in, and we really think this is going to be an exciting opportunity for us, really, to showcase Henry County and to do it in such a way that really causes attention to Henry County's location for business, but also a location for people looking to move in a good quality of life.
In terms of talent, I think the talent is in this region. I think we're competing with the northern end of the Atlanta region in order to get that talent. But with regards to attracting businesses such as Google and Baxter to this particular area, and Bob, I think you've been doing, I think you've been doing a great job, but you're going to need help from the Board of Commissioners. So, based on that question, what type of things do you need from us in order to help you with attracting more industry to this area?
Well, one of the things you did was budgetary support that you did for us this year, be adding a specific business development position that will allow us to have one, an additional person, just strictly Ben on focusing there. But you've also made some very strategic investments. The airport acquisition is going to be a huge investment in the region. We really think the Hampton area and the area around the airport, we have a large assemblies of thousands of acres of land that are just ripe for development. We have some of the infrastructure that's in place now. For example, we have 2 million gallons of excess sewer capacity in that immediate area between the City of Hampton and Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority. The airport itself is a major attractor for aviation businesses, but also a number of other support industries coming in. Your work and your creativity in expanding that runway to 5, 5,500 feet is a major step in the right direction. Getting it to that next level, over 6,000 feet in the instrument approach, will put us literally in the top echelon of community airports in the state of Georgia. The initiative that you're looking at on the wide-area network to serve the county areas is very critical. You talked about Google, you talked about some of those other locations. We talked quite a bit about Alpharetta being kind of the center, the epicenter, if you will, for data centers and other things, and Alpharetta lights Douglas County. And the reason for that really goes back to them having the infrastructure, the bandwidth to be able to do it. Attracting data centers as a specific thing, very, very large investments, the Google Center that's in Douglas County and Yahoo, those can approach a billion dollars with the B in investment. They may not have a ton of jobs that they create, but the jobs they create are very, very high-wage jobs. But that requires bandwidth. It requires redundancy in fiber supplies, and it requires the other things. It requires water, it requires the electricity. They use big power, big water, and big data are the things you need to do. So, all those things that you're working on right now will ultimately have a huge impact on what we're doing. But the transportation improvements that you're doing, the work on the SPOSS campaign, the discussions about a new interchange, which is desperately needed to serve our core industrial areas, is absolutely critical for Henry County to be able to continue to grow and to be a magnet for attracting all types of businesses there, but also your support for education initiatives, for the technical college presence in Henry County, for the College and Career Academy, which opened in August as the second-largest in the state. Next year will be number one. And the opportunities that we're focusing on with the Technology Association of Georgia and the school system to grow STEM programming and educate our students in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, those are all things that the Board of Commissioners are hugely involved at, and you're really a critical linchpin for getting all this done. So, those are just some of the things that you do, the infrastructure, creating the sense of place, creating the infrastructure to be able to drive and sustain that kind of development, and with other groups like the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority, who have given us the ability now to not face many of the challenges that other communities have with water shortages. All those things working together really is going to make Henry County the place to be in the coming decade.
So, basically, what you're saying, we want companies to invest in Henry County.
Yes.
We need to invest in ourselves, correct?
Absolutely. And I love the word investment, because that's truly what we're looking at. We're looking at a return on the investment that you're making in infrastructure, the programs that you're supporting. So, the Board of Commissioners, the Development Authority's main job may be economic development, but economic development is very much the work of the Board of Commissioners and other groups.
The meeting tomorrow, 9:30, 12:30, is that going to include Ben's team to kind of?
Yes, they'll actually.
Get information from us.
Handling the focus groups.
So, we can continue that discussion there as well.
Correct. And we're looking for your input, we're looking for your participation. Ben and his team will go through the process, and some of the things that you heard him talk about, are these the things that are important to you? The things that you would like to see in Henry County, the types of businesses that you'd like to see? And all that will work hand in glove toward that strategy they're going to develop for us in the coming months. So, it's, we hope that you can make at least one of those sessions, because it's extremely important to have your input.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Moving on to Public Safety Resolution Requesting Authorization to Use Asset Forfeits and Seized Funds to Purchase Traffic Investigation Equipment. Major Keith going. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I came before you in October of 2013 in reference to the JAG Edward Byrne Grant. We did accept that, and you voted, and we appreciated it. Since that time, we've engaged in the purchasing, with the purchasing department to get bids in reference to the equipment. The total amount for all of the equipment to facilitate the project will be $28,083. The Byrne Grant itself was for $24,771. We're requesting the authorization to use narcotic seized funds in the amount of $3,312 to augment the cost.
Anyone have any questions?
If not, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to authorize the police department to spend $3,312 from the asset forfeiture and seized funds account to purchase traffic investigation equipment. We have a motion from District Four, second from District One. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. Move. Thank you. You have the next one, too.
Yes, sir.
Major.
Resolution requesting award of bid for a mobile data terminal and equipment.
Yes, sir. This is also in reference to the exact same project, engaging in the purchasing, with the purchasing department for these mobile devices. Lowest bid we recommend to be CDW Government LLC, who submitted the lowest bid of $17,064, and this is in support of the same project for the traffic investigation unit.
Any Commissioner have a question, comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid to mobile data terminals and equipment for the police department in the bid in the amount of $17,064.
Moving to approve.
Have a motion from District Three, second from District Five. Any further discussion? Hold on, favor, raise your right hand. Move.
Yes, sir. My last one before you this evening is in reference to the same project. This is for the GPS Network Rover and Data Collection System for the Police Department Project for the Traffic Unit. Departmental personnel recommend award to Roper Laser Company. Departmental personnel recommend award to Roper Laser Company Incorporated, who submitted the lowest bid of $10,411, sir.
Anybody have a question? If not, have a resolution in the book, resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for a GPS Network Rover and Data Collection System in the amount of $10,411. Have a motion from District Three for approval. Have a second from District Five. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Next, under community development, we have a discussion regarding the preparation of analysis of impeding to fair housing choices for the CDBG programs. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. In October 2013, the Board of Commissioners approved the county entering into an agreement for professional consulting services for the CDBG program with consultant Mullen and Lunigan Associates for the preparation of the county's first analysis of impediments to fair housing. With us this evening, we do have two representatives from Mullen and Lunigan. Speaking this evening will be Marjorie Williams. She will provide information, a brief summary of information, to inform you all of the analysis of impediments and also to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Marjorie Williams. I'm a partner with the firm of Mullen and Lunigan Associates. And a couple of years ago, we, some representatives from my firm were here to help the county begin its participation in the Community Development Block Grant Program. And so we assisted with the first five-year consolidated plan, as well as the first annual plan. And since then, you've been chugging along on your own, you're doing pretty good. And HUD has this, an additional requirement that's called this analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So each year, your CDBG staff comes before you with the annual plan and asks for your approval of the plan. And as part of that plan, there's a series of certifications at the end, and one of those certifications states that Henry County will affirmatively further fair housing choice. And basically, what that means is that HUD is providing these funds to you primarily to assist low and moderate income households and individuals. But in order to continue to receive those funds, HUD requires that the county demonstrate that it administers its housing policies and programs in a non-discriminatory manner. And the way that you demonstrate this to HUD is by preparing this analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. And we call it an AI document for short. So we came in today and we began conducting a series of stakeholder interviews this afternoon. We'll be doing the same all day tomorrow, as well as early Thursday morning. And we will also be looking at demographic and housing data, as well as reviewing policies that impact housing and housing-related issues in the county. We are prepared to provide a draft document to the county in early March and then come back either sometime April, late April, early May, to make a presentation before the Board of Commissioners at that time. And the handout that you have is a very, very brief overview of the process, but if you have any other questions, particularly as it relates to the CDBG program, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Hearing none. This is just a presentation to orientate us, is that correct?
Just information.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request approval of a consultative agreement with David Williams.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. The agenda item before you this evening is a request for approval of a consultative agreement with our retiring employee, David A. Williamson. As I mentioned earlier in the agenda, David notified the county on December 27, 2013, that he would be retiring effective January 17, 2014. As you all know, and just in the presentation earlier, the Transit Department is a very important department and vital part of our county government. And as such, we are looking to bring Mr. Williamson back as a consultant to assist in the transition of that department. We are looking to advertise the Transit Director position by next week or within the coming weeks, so we are looking to try to get someone on board within the next month or so. In the interim, we're just looking for you all to approve to allow us to bring David back so that there will be no gap in trying to get things taken care of. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
We have an agreement in the book that would, if the Board would approve the agreement and put it in a nutshell, that's $35 an hour and it's 30 hours a week. If somebody would move to approve the agreement and, let me see if I got a resolution. I don't think it's a resolution in here, is it? But anyway, approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. Somebody move in that direction. If not, does anybody have any questions?
No.
Sir?
I was actually looking at, so no benefits or anything, and it terminates automatically on before April the 1st of 2014.
That is correct.
Okay. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Have a quick question.
Five days a week, four days a week, three days?
What we have in the agreement is no more than 30 hours a week. So that may end up, it just depends on what time he comes in, but the maximum number would be 30 hours a week.
He owes three days in fact.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, have a motion from District Four, second from District Two. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Full move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request approval of the 2014 capital improvement assistance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Sherry.
Yes, sir. Again, we have an item here this evening, Chair and Board members. Our Transit Department received notification from the Georgia Department of Transportation regarding the execution of the FTA 5311 Capital Assistance Program. Under this program, federal or rural transportation programs are afforded an opportunity to use funds to purchase vehicles. Inasmuch, Henry County is eligible to receive three new 16-passenger wheelchair-accessible vehicles, and then in return, the Transit Department will replace three buses which are eligible for state surplus. There is a local match of $12,356.40, and that funding is available in the Transit Department budget. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Do we have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Federal Transit Administration, FTA 5311, fiscal year 2014 capital agreement with capital improvement assistance between the Department of Transportation State of Georgia and Henry County. And this would be in the amount of $12,356.40 match. Have a motion from District Three to approve, second from District Two. Any further discussions? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Public Works Resolution requesting award of a bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction. Sherry.
Good morning, Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman, Board members. This is, we're seeking approval of a bid for our full-depth reclamation. As you're aware, this process just uses our existing roadway materials mixed with Portland cement to form the new roadway base, then the county will come in and put the asphalt on the top. Of course, this process is much more cost-effective and environmental-friendly than rebuilding the existing roadway with new and more costly materials. Invitations worsen out to four vendors. Atlanta Paving and Concrete Incorporated and Oercross submitted the lowest overall bid with a total cost of $662,607.55. Our department recommends Atlanta Paving and Concrete for this. We have had multiple jobs with them, and they've always done a real good job.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction in the amount of Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion from District Three, second from District One. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution request approval of an amendment to the annual contract with Vulcan Materials for Accord Aggregates.
As Henry County discovered that Vulcan Materials was not billing our Stormwater Department according to our annual contract, they were billing our DOT Department where we buy most of our rock from at the annual contract price, but through Stormwater that doesn't quite use as many materials, we noticed that they were not charging correctly. Once we discovered this, we went back through the invoices to determine how much had been overcharged, and we went back as far as July of '07, and this went through October 31st of 2012. After we discovered this, we talked to Vulcan, their salesman, and started beginning the discussion on how they might reimburse those charges. We had multiple meetings with Vulcan, trying to negotiate how that would be done. Vulcan proposed a $3 per ton deduction on each rock product until the $70,811.39 was realized, or that's how much they owed from those overcharges. So both, recommendation was both DOT and Stormwater will then use this $3 per ton reduction until the $70,000 is recovered. What we're asking for is to sign this revised contract, which reduces the cost of those aggregates by $3 a ton. So you have in there the current pricing and then the amended pricing per ton. I have done an estimate for the Board's benefit to say, how long will it take us to recoup that? Kind of anticipating that. I looked at just the Department of Transportation. Last year, in total tons, we used over 21,206 tons in a 12-month period, which averages about 1,700 tons per month. If we multiply that by the $3 per ton savings, we estimate about 13 months that we'll recover that money. I might add, now that's just the amount of tons that DOT moves, uses. Stormwater will be using some material as well, but they don't, they don't use nearly as much aggregate as our DOT. So my guess is in about 12 months' time, somewhere in that time period, we should be able to be reimbursed those monies. The reason for the spread over time, the cash flow to Vulcan, this is the way that they requested it, so we're bringing it before the Board for your consideration.
Or their oversight?
Honestly, sir, I think it would be some of both. Vulcan Materials, we have an annual contract that they should have been charging us, and I do think, again, that that should have been caught during the bill-paying process. And kind of an interesting story how it was caught, but we did catch it.
Do you think they should be paying us back with interest, since they owe us the money?
We approached this from a lot of different angles. And to be kind of real honest about it, I think because of the fact that they are willing to go back that far and reimburse us for that, even though, you know, we were paying those bills, they were still willing to go back and honor that, we certainly could ask for that, but I think we felt that if they were willing to pay us back, even going back five years, that was a pretty good consideration. And just, that was my thoughts.
I've noticed that the county attorney has not signed off on this, and it is a contract. Is that, have you reviewed the contract or the agreement?
I did review the contract, and I met with Terry as he was working through a solution for a proposal that's before you, both him and the purchasing director. So the contract appears in order. The only thing that, should the Board approve this, the only thing that the county would need to ensure internally is that there are not being a commingling of the funds that are owed to Stormwater with that of DOT's funds. And so we've talked to Angie Soro to ensure that Stormwater gets all of its appropriate credit in this particular transaction. That was my only concern from an internal standpoint.
Is that going to be a difficult task?
It's not going to be easy, I don't think, exactly as county attorney listed. The credit is a Stormwater credit. The overcharges were at Stormwater, not DOT. So basically, what's got to happen is if DOT buys rock, they're going to give it to us at a cheaper price. So DOT is going to be getting the cheaper price, but that other $3 per ton, there's going to have to be some budget amendments or something similar to that to get the money back where it belongs, which is in Stormwater, which is an enterprise fund. So she's exactly right. All this credit needs to go back to Stormwater, not to the DOT. So what I intend to do is, if the Board agrees with that, is meet with Angie, and there will have to be a lot of coordination between DOT, Stormwater, and Finance to make sure that these all get credited back to Stormwater. It's not going to be easy, but this seemed to be the fastest way to get it done.
Is that something we feel comfortable doing, or you think we need to do it another way?
On the finance part, I can't really speak.
We discussed a couple of different options in speaking with Angie, with purchasing. We felt this was probably the most expedient way of recouping our funds back. And Terry's right, I mean, the challenge in this is going to be making sure that we have some internal controls in place to ensure that the monies that are credited to DOT are transferred or-
How long has it been going on?
We discovered it in 2012, and we found that it went back as far as 2007.
So we didn't squeal in 2012 when we found it?
Oh, we squealed, yes, sir. We squealed real loud, but it's taken us this long to negotiate a way for the repayment.
I recognize the gentleman from District Two.
So the amount is $70,811, correct? Is what we're talking about? Is it not something, just like it took a while, and you're already saying this could take a while to pay it back at the $3, you couldn't create an encumbrance or a liability and then just reverse amateurize it? I mean, is this not, I mean, this doesn't sound super complicated. I mean, maybe Fred can help us out with this.
Basically, what's going to have to happen is when the invoices come in, and when the first one comes in, I've got a meeting I'll set up with accounts payable and other members of the staff. But basically, every ton that's purchased will, as is shown, have a $3 credit. What we'll end up doing, this is simple accounting, is basically take that $3 credit, gross up the invoice for the full amount, charge that to the respective department. The $3 credit will go over to the Stormwater. The net effect is that the cash will be the difference, and that's what the check will be cut for. So it's-
This is a split transaction.
You know, when you record it. I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal. Do you? Yeah. It's an accounting treatment that's to be done, and it's-
Yes, upfront.
Sir?
If we ever asked, you know-
Oh, we asked for the cash right immediately. That was our first request.
And I take it they said no?
They said it would be extremely difficult for them to come up with $70,000. That would be a big cash flow problem for them.
Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else have any questions? We have a amendment to the actual contract for quarry aggregate, which is bid 13-12-0 Bravo, and it amends the annual contract as per stated, and it has a list here that Vulcan Materials' current pricing, and it says Vulcan Material amended pricing per ton. It's, all these items in here, all the numbers, is $3 off. So I'm going to leave it up to the board to, how would you like to address this?
Let me ask a question. I mean, I think, as we're talking about, is the concern of the board from the accounting standpoint, or is it just the, that this is going to take a while to get the, the money back? Because I see some apprehension, and if it's an accounting issue, I don't think it's that big of a deal.
I don't think it is either, but the $70,000 could be a, a big deal in, in the budget.
Yes, sir. I'm always about get the money.
So you're saying it will take, based on average, 13 months?
12 to 13 months. I feel pretty comfortable saying we'll recoup that.
And why did you say we didn't catch this? I'm just asking.
I think there was a problem in the review of paying invoices at the Stormwater Department through those years. At the DOT, you know, we make sure, we deal a lot with annual contracts, so we're constantly looking. We buy pipe through annual contracts, we buy rock, we buy sheeting from Vulcan for our signs. We have numerous annual con, we buy asphalt through an annual contract. So we're always checking those prices. How it happened was, an invoice happened to not get paid at Stormwater. The quarry sent us a notice that said, "We're not going to furnish any more rock to the DOT." Well, I'm like, "Well, that's interesting. Why?" Find out an invoice hadn't got paid, so I asked the invoice to be sent to me to find out what's going on. When the invoice came, it was a Stormwater invoice. It wasn't a DOT invoice, it was Stormwater. So when I looked at the invoice, one of my ladies in the office that reviews that got the invoice and looked at it and brought it to me and said, "Terry, look what they're charging for rock." And I looked down and I said, "Uh-oh, we got a problem." So that's how we discovered the problem. So once.
This is as much our fault maybe as it was theirs.
I would say, yes, sir, as I mentioned earlier, that it should have been caught at our office. And Vulcan, to their credit, did say, you know, "We'll honor that, we'll go back." So to me, you know, looking at all things considered, they immediately corrected the problem. From then on, they started charging all departments, you know, the annual contract prices. So they had some problems in their billing, but, you know, this should have been called at, at the department level as well, so. I mean, it happened, and we got it corrected, and now they're, they're doing what I think is maybe a reasonable approach.
I think that one of the things that we're looking at also is the fact that Vulcan has been the low bidder over the years furnishing materials to Henry County as far, you know, really as far back as I can remember. We've had some other low numbers, but Vulcan's been very responsive, and they're local, and there's a few other things. I mean, where we pick up here is local. So there's, there's a lot of pluses. The other thing is for us to try and go back and get it. Obviously, we could go from a legal standpoint, but, you know, how much we would prevail at the end of the day under that and what it would cost us to do it. So I, I think we, I think the chair is right. We, we share in some responsibility here in that someone in the Stormwater Department back in, way back, not, not the existing Stormwater as we know it today, failed to check the invoices. I think we should be, with them honoring it, I think we should move in that direction and allow it to happen. It's going to take a little bit of extra time, but I think, there again, at the end of the day, I think it's worth the $70,000 to take the time to make that happen. So I mean, I would, Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we would honor this agreement and move forward and get this behind us and hope that we learn from it.
Would you be so kind as to add that you would authorize the chairman to execute the agreement?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from District Four. Have a second from District Two. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Thank you. Next, before we get started, we, looking at the people that's requested to be heard for the five minutes at the end of the meeting. Scanning through here, you got, I've got four people that would like to be heard in reference to the Spivey Community Street Sign Toppers. And what I'd like for the board to consider is, once we discuss this at the appropriate time, we recognize the public to making some comments about the issue before we vote on it. So it will take a motion to, did I cut you out on this? Oh, oh, I got you, you got, okay. So it will take a motion for the board to approve, to accept public comments on this issue.
So moved.
Have a motion, District Five?
My second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Next, we're going to hear that, an add-on that was in the amendment, resolution, request authorization to place sign toppers on street names signed within the Lake Spivey community. Terry.
All right, you want me to do my rest of, of my presentation before they speak?
Yes, sir. You make your presentation, and then we'll hear the citizens, and then we can make comments, and then we can vote. So we need to hear the citizens before we actually vote on. So you make the presentation, and we'll move forward.
All right. The, the issue is Lake Spivey Community requests to place sign toppers on top of county street names. This issue came up back in time, back in October 2009. We received information about the sign toppers being placed on the street sign in Lake Spivey. We, at that time, we were not aware that, they had not contacted our office about that, so our sign shop was directed to remove them. After we had removed approximately 23 signs, the Commissioner's Office was contacted by a representative from Lake Spivey Communities. Myself and then Assistant Tommy Smith visited the area and found an additional 35 signs that were installed. A meeting was held with the representatives in order to get an understanding of what they were trying to accomplish by putting these sign toppers up. The representatives from LSCI stated that they were trying to promote and enhance their community. This item was brought before the BOC on October the 5th, 2009, in a workshop meeting. During that meeting, myself stated that, or I stated that we would like to remove these remaining signs and try to assist the community with their goals by working and involving the Planning and Zoning Division. Several meetings were held with Planning and Zoning to try to assist and, and help them in their goals of enhancing their community. Then in March, my department contacted the FHWA, or Federal Highway Administration, and asked for their opinion on the sign toppers, and that's when they said that there was no provision for the type of application on the street name sign. So I asked for permission to remove them, and the signs were taken down and given back to the community. The community has now asked for this to be revisited back in January of this year. So we have brought that before the board here to get y'all's decision on that.
Your question, you said there was no provision for the signs, but there was.
There was no provision against the signs, correct?
My interpretation, and this is mine, the way they put it, that since there was no provision in there allowing them, then that they should not be there, since there's not a provision stating how they should be.
But there was no provision saying that they shouldn't be there.
It did not say they shouldn't be, it just didn't make a provision of how they could be.
Let me, what was, what's your interpretation?
Well, my interpretation is consistent with yours. I, I asked for a copy of the, either the ASHTO or MUTCD rule or regulation. Montgomery says, I don't think it was placed in the packet for the board, but the blurb that I got from the email that's attached did not seem to prohibit and outright prohibit this type of sign topping. And that's, it's as simple as that to me.
And I mean, and even on the Clayton County side, I mean, they have toppers on the Clayton County side, and if you look at a number of the exclusive areas throughout metro Atlanta, you'll see these type of toppers. So I haven't, you know, I think, I think that the board should strongly consider allowing Lake Spivey, it's a beautiful community, to allow them to have their toppers on the signs in, in their community.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, I will recognize citizens that would like to be heard. I call your name, or you can, it doesn't matter, just whoever would like to come up, if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Nikki Ford, and I live over in Spivey Ridge, I was Spivey Glen, here representing Spivey Glen and Spivey Ridge, because we're the only two subdivisions that seem to lost our stripes there, so we don't look like we belong to it, to the community at all now. And all we were trying to do is create a, a nice image of community, you know, something positive, something appealing, something to maybe keep the property values up as well. And, and I have a petition here with 153 of my neighbors that would like to see their signs back as well. And so we asked that you pass Resolution 14, and let us do that, so get them back up. Positive going-ons should be supported, you know, not, not shot down. Carlotta, would you want to come up and say something? Carlotta is here with Spivey Ridge, I'm sure she'd like to add something to as well.
I'm the Homeowners Association President for Spivey, Spivey Ridge subdivision, we have 100.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Okay, I'm sorry. Carlotta Horrell, 261 Hunting Court, Lake Spivey, Georgia. I'm the president of the, of our HOA. We have 105 homes in our subdivision. We sit on the backside of Lake Spivey Country Club. There are about 21 Lake Spivey communities that are part of one big association, the Lake Spivey Association, and those communities are both in Clayton and Henry County. And we've tried to do a rebranding of our community, of the Lake Spivey community, because you have, you know, nice homes in the area, and we're just trying to maintain our property values and, you know, kind of portray the images like Dunn Woody and some of the other communities up north that have these sign toppers. There is nothing in the city code that says that these sign toppers cannot be there. I spoke with Russell McMarry from the state DOT, and he sent me an email back and information that there is nothing in state law that prohibits these sign toppers from being there. I also contacted the Federal Highway Administration. There is nothing in their policy that prohibits these signs from being there. So we're here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to allow us to reinstall our sign toppers back into the Lake Spivey communities that exist in Henry County.
This slideshow here is just, just a small handful of pictures that I took in about an hour's time. There is, there is way more. All, all the nicer communities all around Atlanta are, are using these, so it's, it seemed kind of odd that it wouldn't be okay to do it.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I'm David Schaafman. I live at 879 Plymouth Drive in Jonesboro, zip code, but Henry County. I live in one of the nine subdivisions that are part of Lake Spivey Community that are part of Henry County. I also am a board member of the Lake Spivey Community Incorporated, so I, I here dual-hatted today, representing both myself as a homeowner, but also the Lake Spivey Board. And I was also a part of that workshop that Terry referred to back in 2009. I was part of that group meeting where we first presented our, our issues about keeping the, the toppers. And of course, Nikki and Carlotta both expressed our position on that. But what we're asking for you to do is take a look at the toppers that are around, not just in Henry County and our community, but also throughout the metropolitan Atlanta area. And they're all using these toppers, and they're, obviously Clayton County has never said anything about theirs, but you can see from the pictures that Nikki put together that, you know, these are commonplace items in communities that are looking to brand themselves from a point of distinction. And that's all we're trying to do, is, is represent Lake Spivey and Henry County in a, in a, in a good light, to help bring and attract more people to, to our community, to the Henry County community, in an effort to maintain property values, to increase property values, which helps not only us as homeowners, but helps you from a, a tax collecting standpoint. But we'd appreciate your, your, your vote, if you will, in recommending that we allow, be allowed to, to put these toppers up. And I think the, the measure before you says, "At no cost to the county, we just want permission to put the toppers that were taken down, put them back up." We'll put them back up. There are some in the community that are still up. In my subdivision, they're still up. There are other subdivisions that are not. So we're just asking that, for your permission to keep those, those toppers and put them up where they're not up. Any questions?
David, let me ask you one question, and I really like the idea. I, I like the concept, and, and I think it's very attractive. But if like one gets damaged or something, y'all are prepared to replace them?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That was always part of the agreement. We paid initially as homeowners to put them up. We bought them, we installed them, and in some subdivisions, they were taken down, and we're not really asking for the county to do anything other than give us permission to put them back up, and we'll take care of all the maintenance, just like, I know in our subdivision, we have ornamental street signs, the, the posts. We're responsible for those, you know, if they need maintenance, we paint them. If they need to be replaced, because somebody runs into them, we replace them. Same thing with the, the toppers on these, these street signs. No cost to the county.
So win-win.
We talk about less government, less regulation. You know, we talk about improving the quality of life for the citizens, the citizens of this county. Let's do things that make sense sometime, and let's move forward and give these people their signs, their toppers.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Ellen Pfister, 205 Reeves Creek Way, Lake Spivey, Georgia. And I had first noticed the sign toppers had not been removed from all of the Henry County neighborhoods when I was looking for a house, and Nikki and I looked at each other and said, "We can't live here because we'll be out of Lake Spivey Community." And he said, "No, hey, look at that street sign. This is actually Longwood, it's in the Lake Spivey Community." And then we thought, "Well, why is our community without a street topper? What if people want to shop in our community for a home and want to be in the Spivey Community as well and won't see that sign and therefore look elsewhere for homes? So we think it'll improve our home value and our community to have these signs up." Thank you.
Did you say you had a petition?
I do, sir.
Would you be so kind as to give that to the clerk, please? Anybody else like to be heard at this time?
I have a petition too, from our.
How many names on the petitions?
205 total.
Okay, 205. So can you enter that into the record?
Is all the Homeowners Association represented in this? Would that be, make all these people happy?
It would. I spoke to the president, he said he would love to be here, but he had a prior obligation.
I know you mentioned, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine communities.
Yes, sir. And the signs, you mean?
Yeah.
That was, that's all I could get in an hour's time.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, part of this resolution is, they, they get, the board, if they're privy. I'm saying, part of this resolution is, they, they, the board, if they're previous, is giving permission for the Lake Spivey Communities Incorporated, which would include these.
Those are the nine Henry County subdivisions. There is 21 altogether, but the other 12 are in Clayton County. And they're not part of this issue, obviously.
Okay, anybody have a question? Anybody else like to be heard? If not, we have a resolution in the book, request authorization to place sign toppers on county streets. And it's pretty well spelt out that they would absorb all the cost associated.
Excuse me, Chairman, if I could, if I could add, were they, in the resolution where it states the community will furnish and install, we're going to add and maintain at no expense to, expense to the county? If that's the, I think you made mention of that, that was agreeable to the.
Could you say that again, for my benefit? What we should add?
In the resolution, it states, the statement right now is, whereas the community will furnish and install these toppers at no expense to the county.
Right.
As noted, David, also add the statement, or the language, whereas the community will furnish, install, and maintain these toppers at no expense to the county. Just add the lang, add the wording, and maintain.
Okay. Somebody move in that direction? What district is this in?
It's my district. So move with the language that Mike just communicated.
Okay, we have a motion to.
Approved resolution as published with the amendments as stated by District 5. We have a second from District 1, correction, District 3. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. Next, we will have a resolution commending A C C G on the occasion of its centennial, Exhibit 14. Don't have to leave.
It's past my dinner time.
Okay.
Thanks for hearing us, Commissioners.
Okay, good night. I'm not going to read this whole thing. We have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners commending the Association of the County Commissioners of Georgia, A C C G, on the occasion of its centennial. And it is, what it does, it recognizes the fact that A C C G has accomplished 100 years history, and it was founded in 1914, when the county commissioners came together in support of the Good Road Movement. This is kind of like a monumental resolution that we will send A C G commending, commending them. If somebody moved, we accept the resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners commending the Association of County Government of Georgia on the Association, correction, on the occasion of centennial. We have a motion, District 5.
Second.
Second from District 3. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, we have a, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners appointing citizens to the Henry County Age Council on Aging from District 5.
So move.
Okay, we have, we have a motion.
Second.
To, by District 5.
Second.
Second by District 2. And would you be so kind as to read your selectees out, please? Your appointees.
I am appointing Yvonne Beazer and Mildred Smeltz to the, to the Council on Aging.
Do we have any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. So move. Okay. Resolution setting the qualification fees for elected officials. And it talks about the state law pertaining to qualified fees, OCGA 21-2-131 requires each county given an authority to fix and publish qualification, qualifying fees for the county officials not later than February the 1st of any year, in which is a general primary, nonpartisan election, or general election, is to be held. The qualifying fee is 3% of the base salary. If you'll notice, we have a resolution here that calls for the county commissioners. The salary is $35,000. The qualifying fee would be $1,050. Board of Education members, $16,712 would be the salary. The qualifying fee would be $50136. State court judge, $140,74425. The qualifying fee would be $4,222.33. Chief magistrate judge, $133,70704. Qualifying would be $4,011.21. Solicitor general, $135,435.79. The qualifying fee would be $4,063.07. If somebody would move that we adopt this qualifying fee, it would be a resolution in your book.
So move.
I have a motion from District 4, second by District 1. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand.
I had a question.
I'm sorry. I thought you seconded.
My apologies.
No, I didn't. My question is this. The qualifying fee is based on our salary. And when you have commissioners who make two different salaries, how do you, how do you do that? How does that work?
The salary is going to be the same.
Beginning next year, next January. The salary is going to be the same across the board. The only person, the only people that have different salaries are myself and Reed, but we'll go down to 35 in January.
The qualifying fee is based on your salary, correct?
It will be based on the salary for the election year, when the election year comes up.
2015. It's based on that, not, not the last three years that you've been running. It's based on when you're going to run again, which is next November.
Okay.
That would be the salary.
That'd be start salary in January.
Yes, exactly.
May I ask another question then?
Yes.
Okay, when the new elected commissioners qualified, we qualified at what the, the board was being paid at that time. We weren't, we didn't qualify on what we were going to make.
I can't answer that.
At the time that the salaries were reduced for the board of commissioners at that time, it only applied, that reduction only applied to the individuals who were coming into office, which would have covered yourself, Commissioner Moss, Commissioner Barr, and Commissioner Preston. The law does not allow you to change the salaries of existing commissioners. You can't reduce the salaries of existing commissioners. So everyone will be caught up and even next year, January 1, 2015. But there was a lag, and that's what the board chose to do at that time. But beginning January 1, 2015, there will be uniformity amongst the board with respect to salaries. I don't know if that answers your question.
Commissioner Moss's primary question is, is why did he have to pay an additional $240? Then if you think about the, because he paid 3% on $43,000 versus $35,000.
I mean, the timing of when you were running as a candidate, when you applied as a candidate, the salary had already been set and printed for the base salary. And the adjustment to the salaries came after that time. I'll have to go back and look at my timeline of events, I don't have that memorized. But like today's motion that's before you, this will be published February 1, and then that'll be set for the qualifying fee. And I think that's what happened with yours, Commissioner Moss.
Well, I know in 2012, about January or February, they'd done the same thing we're doing now, approved the qualifying fees. But then in May, they changed the salary for the 2013 commissioners, so it don't.
And when did you, when was qualifying? When was the qualifying period?
Qualifying was like May the 23rd or something, I think.
Okay.
Something along that line, and they changed it May the 21st. I was just trying to figure out.
That's a good question.
And I don't think I have one yet.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, I'm going to correct an error. Error has occurred. The chair inadvertently took, raised my hand for a question. I thought it constituted a second for the motion from the distinguished gentleman from District 4. So consequently, we have a motion on the floor from District 4. Now we need a second.
Second.
Have a second from District 5. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I thought that was, when you did that, that was my mistake, but I'm correcting error. Error has occurred. Resolution request approval of local legislation regarding the election superintendent, President Janet Shelnut, the election director. Ms. Janet, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the resolution before you concerns local legislation to amend our existing legislation. We combined our election board and registration board in 2006. From that, we had to tweak it one time in 2009 to stagger the years of the board members. This is tweaking it again, but we're, we're basically, I call it a cleanup piece of legislation. It, it came to the attention this year that, as far as my position, there was not exactly a removal clause in place. So what this legislation does, it doesn't change my term by any means. It has always been a two-year term. The legislation said for it to coincide with the board members. Well, that wouldn't ever work because they are staggered. So it is still a two-year term. It is still basically the same, except it does put it removal after notice and a hearing or whatever, under the senior superior court judge. I have always assumed that's where it was. I didn't find out until this year that there just was not, that part of the section put in the legislation. When we originally had the bill drafted, Legislative Council at the Capitol drew it up. And it was fielded behind the legislation for chief registrar. This, we had a meeting between Chairman Smith, Gary Barron called the meeting, Judge McGarrett and myself. And we all sat down, and we also invited Dr. Edith Gonzel, chairman of the election board, to attend, because I wanted them to make sure they knew what was going on too. Because at the same time, they were looking at trying to clear it up. So we all are in agreement that we, this is, this legislation is a good piece of cleanup legislation. We would like for you to vote on it tonight, to send it down to our local delegation, so that can be voted on and passed in the General Assembly. It's going to be a fast session, so we need to get it, get it down there if we're going to do it. So I'd appreciate your vote to pass this on to the Capitol. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions? We have a resolution in the book, it's lengthy that y'all have. And in, in order to meet the requirements of our local delegation, it needs to be unanimous. If it's not unanimous, it might pose some problems when we introduce some local legislation. So having said that, I've got the resolution drafted up with all the signatures. And if we don't get unanimous, then obviously I don't think we should send it. But if we do get unanimous, I'm going to start down here and let everybody sign it while we're here, and we'll get this to Atlanta quickly. So if somebody was.
Why does it have to be unanimous? Where is, where is that decreed?
There's no agreement. That's just been the practice of our delegation, as long as I've been in the county, that they want to see unanimous agreement amongst the board members when you're requesting local legislation. That's a requirement that they have. It's nowhere widening, it's certainly not a requirement of the law.
It's not really a requirement, it's more of a request.
It's kind of like the protocol.
It's protocol.
28 years in Hampton. Our delegation would accept nothing unless it was unanimous.
I know, in 2006, even combining our boards, the delegation wouldn't even hear it unless we had all the, everybody signing off on it. And I think it's just a rule among themselves that they want it to be unanimous. But there's nothing, she said in writing whatsoever.
I think it's our own local delegation that has that.
And I'm not sure if all the local delegations have that rule, but the Henry delegation, legislative delegation.
Likes, likes.
Has to have that.
We have, we have a resolution for board consideration?
So move.
We have a motion from District 4. We have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. Okay, before we, before we leave, I'm going, I'm going to get everybody to sign it. I don't guess it matters if it has holes in it, right? We don't have a clean copy, right? You got a clean one? Good job.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Start right here, let him do it, and we'll get this. While we're signing that, next we have Elf, which was an amendment. We have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners to accept the advisory board recommendation, the board commissioners for the adoption. District 2 has a vacancy, and there's a resolution if District 2 will announce his appointee.
I'd make a motion to appoint Willie Brown to the zoning advisory board for District 2.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second from District 4. Any further discussion? Only favor, raise your right hand. When you get to it, Bruce, let him pass it over to Shay. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related comments. This is a segment, you'll get five minutes. I'm going to recognize Mr. Canard Turner for five minutes. State your name and address for the records, please.
Good evening, board. My name's Canard Turner, 406 Buckboard Lane, Locust Grove. My comments are two-part, and this, this, this young man next to Mr. Williams is going to start off.
Would you give your name and address, too?
Yes, Tyron Williams, address 712 Yule Drive.
Thank you.
And thank you all for here this afternoon. I want to start off by saying that.
What we want to do this evening, right quick, is our purpose for being here is to request the opportunity to use some unused football fields down at Warren Hole Park. Also has a concession stand that we, as taxpayers, paid about $350,000 to build that has never been used with the current association in their regular season. But before I get into that part of it, which is going to be my comments, I want to kind of throw it over to Canard to kind of let you all know who we are as Georgia elite and where we come from and that kind of thing before we move forward.
Like I said, my name's Canard Turner. I'm the president and co-founder of Georgia Elite Sports Academy. We are a youth sports association that utilizes sports as the vessel to reach kids mentally, spiritually, academically, and physically. We want to use sports as the, the means to draw kids toward our organization so that we can help them be better citizens as well as better athletes. Our mission is to offer community-based sports, like I said, that, that will invest in the youth's spiritual, mental, physical well-being and social well-being. We'll do that by having different sports such as flag football, tackle football, baseball, different other sports like that. We'll also provide scholarship for, for young athletes that come into our program, that stand our program, meet a certain criteria. We'll also offer academic tutoring, different things as regards to checking grades and things of that nature, because we want to highlight the student part and student athlete. One thing we found in our research and, and trying to create this entity, because we're a nonprofit organization, is that there's no bridge between the gap of school, or I guess you want to say, the school system and family. We're just trying to be that bridge. During our research, we didn't find any boys and girls club, anything like that here in Henry County. And like I said, we want to be that bridge in that gap. Our educators are stretched to the limits because of budget cuts and things of that nature. We want to be able to kind of sort of supplement that by offering these different sports programs and academic things along that line. About two years ago, I came up with this idea. I actually had a meeting with District 2 Commissioner Brian Preston and Tim Cooley of Parks and Rec about this idea. And it took a while for me to get my 501(c)(3) and my nonprofit status. So now we're at the point where we have that, and it's something that we feel like we should offer to the community. One thing that we did in our due diligence to offer this to the community is we went out and publicized it, and we actually had 100, 150 residents sign a petition stating that this is something that they want. I spoke to different educational leaders, principals, people down at the Board of Education, different people from leadership, business standpoint. So I think it'll be something great for the, for the county. And one of the things that we've done in a short period of time is we've gotten national recognition from USA Football, which is the nation's governing body over youth football and players. and player safety and development, recognized by NFL and NFL Players Association. Also, we're a part of AYF, which is American Youth Football, which is the largest youth football foundation. Also, in our efforts of trying to start this, we did receive recognition from the Atlanta Falcons and the Atlanta Falcons Youth Foundation, also gave us a grant to help us get started with this. So just a bunch of positive, great things that we're trying to bring to Henry County. And just like the Henry County Development Authority, we're trying to, and we feel like we can take the development of our youth in our area to a much, 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 much higher place.
And in order to do that, we have already been granted the right to use the fields for our NFL Flag Football League that'll be started in this spring, March 22. The second phase of our program is the fall program, the D1 Tackle Football League. And when we saw the fields, we was on the board down at Locust Grove, we had an opportunity to observe those fields. And I've been playing football in the area for the last, with my son, for the last four years, and we never have used those fields down there. And because we don't have a tenant on Field 3 and 4, the fields are in pretty bad shape, Field 3. And the concession stand that we paid so much money as taxpayers to build has, you know, has all kind of stuff growing inside of it as it relates to bugs and, you know, the dust, the spiders, all those kind of things. And we just don't feel like it's a good thing where that field, the field and the concession stand shouldn't be used. And if we're gonna use it, we're gonna bring participants to the county, which in return is gonna bring revenue to the county. And the last thing I wanted to add to that, one of the themes for tonight seemed to be branding. We're trying to brand what we're doing for the county in the right way. And I don't feel that it's right that an association that is branding the county in the absolute wrong way, which I don't wanna rehash the information and all the things that's been going on there. We're gonna allow the Secretary of State and some other outside entities to deal with those folks, but they're branding the county in the wrong way, and we're trying to brand the county in the right way. And so we just ask for you all to give us permission to use those fields. It is separated from the other guys down there that's playing in the park by a big pavilion and playground area. And so it won't be a problem. We'll be offering something that they're not offering. And so that's kind of where we're at. And I wanna thank the chairman, because he heard us out and instructed Tim the other day to get with us. And he did get with us, Tim Cooley, from the Director of Park and Rec. And he got with us, and I thought he came up with a real good idea as it relates to keeping the two associations separate. And I think that's the route that should be taken. So my only, our only request to you all is a pretty simple request, is that could we use the unused fields down there and bring some more participants to the county? Thank you.
Thank you.
We met, you know, it was probably a year and a half ago or stuff. You were, you know, you would, you were kind of still in the brainstorming stage at that point. And we had talked about, because at that point, and maybe the vision's changed a little bit, but there was a lot of spiritual impact. And I had mentioned, you know, looking at upward programs and, you know, churches and others to help them with that. Have y'all changed? Has it changed a little bit? Has the vision changed a little bit just since then?
It's pretty much stayed the same. One thing we decided to do, I actually met with the South Metro FCA Director, Mike Robey, and we kind of came up with a plan. One thing we didn't wanna do is offend anyone that wanted to be a part of our program that didn't believe in Christ or anything of that nature. So one thing we did was to kind of sort of change it, I guess I'd say technically, from a spiritual aspect to an inspirational aspect. And one of the things that we decided to do is to come up with what you call character traits, which in an FCA program would be devotionals, but in our program, be character traits. And we'll do what you call inspirational timeouts, where we give different character traits for the week, whether it be honesty, whether it be leadership or things of that nature. We sit around a bucket and talk to the young men and women about. So it didn't change much. Like I said, we changed the jargon so that we didn't offend anyone or turn anyone away that wanted to be a part of our program to exceed, to excel academically or anything like that, so.
Anybody else have any questions or comment? The only comment that I would make was, right now, we don't have any agreement with the current Locust Grove Association. I think that won't come due till March, if I'm correct. So if that's the case, I think maybe that would be the time to consider it in the new contract. Right now, there's no contract. So I know we go through a period of time where we, we just coming out of one from August to November, I think, and then we get one in March for the spring, and we deal with, at one time, I'll sign, the board will consider and approve about 19 different association contracts. So that would be the time. I don't think the boards, I wouldn't be prepared to say, yes, you can use the two fields. And I don't think the board would be prepared to say that tonight.
Well, the only problem with that is that the leagues that we play in, in order to play in the leagues that we're gonna play in, they all have to know that we have home fields to play on. And our, you know, like I said, the fields are virtually unused down there anyway, and to, we're gonna only use them four or five Saturdays of our football season, because we only have four to either five home games. But we have to let the associations know, the leagues that we're gonna play in, that before they allow us in, that we have to have fields, home fields, to do that. So as it relates to, you know, the guys that's down there now, you know, getting their situation approved in May, that's fine. But they know they have that home field, because typically, that's how it works every year. All the associations know that they have their home fields, so they can play in different leagues, because they have to let those leagues know that they have those fields. And we're put in a position where we couldn't tell them anything, so that would essentially put us out of, out of the business.
Well, I guess it might be a prerequisite for March, but I think we could bring an agreement most any time, I suppose, for the board's consideration, if that's the case, if somebody wants to consider that. But I think if it's gonna take place, it needs to take place in the agreement that we have with some association. But I don't think the board would be prepared to say, yes, you've got two fields tonight. I don't, I'm not prepared to say that, so. Yes, sir?
Does your season start prior to, and I have absolutely no idea about the two associations, okay? But does yours start prior to the other association? Are y'all running at the same time period? Is there a different time constraint?
No, it's pretty much the same, pretty much the same time period. They start a little bit earlier than we will, but, so it's pretty close to the same time period. The problem with it is that, right now, in youth football, all the associations, especially in the D1 side, in which we're gonna play, they're out recruiting their kids now. They started recruiting their kids in December. And if we don't have a place to tell the kids and the league that we have a place to play, we cannot get into the business of recruiting those kids here. So I do understand all we're asking for, and like I say, I think, Tim, under your guidance, Chairman, had a great idea to solve the situation. And I, you know, I just, I'm at a loss, because we've actually been going through this situation since September of 2013.
I read an email, and I don't know who it was from, that I got just, was it today or yesterday?
Might have been today. Today. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. And it, the email stated that there was an agreement in place, and then it was rescinded?
There was a proposed solution to the problem.
Right.
It was myself, Mr. Williams, Tim Cooley, and Tommy Mitchell, I believe, who is the District 1 Recreation Board appointee. We all sat in a room last Thursday, and we pretty much had a good hour, hour and a half long talk about a good solution so that both associations could thrive, because essentially, we offered two different things. They offer a local recreational program, we're gonna offer a competitive travel Division 1-type program. We sat in that room, and just to kind of give you an idea, Tim drew an umbrella, where you had Henry County Parks and Rec, and up under that umbrella, of course, you have the thing that holds umbrella together. One side was us, which is Georgia Elite Sports Academy, and the other side was Locust Grove Football and Cheer Association. And we all felt, gathered from that conversation, that we all had a good understanding, when we talked about it, that that was the best route to go, so that, so that that association can thrive for those children that wanna play recreational football locally, and those that wanna compete at a higher, higher standard. And I, once we came to that resolution, it was agreed, from my understanding, that that was the route that we were going to take. And the only thing that needed to happen was that they needed to meet with the other association that occupies that, that those other two fields, to let them know that, hey, this is how this is gonna work, and go from there.
But the two, if I read it correctly, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the two associations could coexist at that park. There was no issue between the two associations. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'll give you a little, just a small backdrop. Both myself and Tyron used to sit on the board at Locust Grove Football and Cheer. We both took a lot of the same initiatives and ideas to that board. One thing that they weren't receptive of were a lot of the ideas, which was fine. They also got rid of one of the, that D1 competitive portion that we are referring to. And with those 150 participants, we had a lot of parents that came to us that wanted that offering. And like I said, they don't offer that. The way the Warren, I don't know if you're familiar with Warren Holda Park, the way it's constructed, you have two fields that are on the lower half of the park, and you go up probably a small little hill, you have a pavilion and a playground area, and you have another two sets of athletic fields. So we felt in good conscience that, you know, we all adults, and we're gonna offer two different things, two distinctly different things, that this would be the best route to go, especially since they got rid of a program that they no longer wanted to be a part of.
My only issue with it, and this is just me, but my only issue with it is the timing factor, the fact that we just got it, and we're just hearing it right now, and there's certain agreement and legal procedures that have to take place prior to us doing it, am I right in that?
You're correct.
So we couldn't make a decision tonight, although I'd like to be able to, but government doesn't move that fast.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Like Tyron said, we, me and Mr. Williams had an opportunity to speak with Chairman, and we spoke for about a good hour. We just kind of sort of talked about different issues and things of that nature. And I think that the Chairman was very honest with us. He was very forthright, and I think he pretty much came up with two, two solutions, two solutions I'm actually in favor of. But he did instruct the Parks Director, Tim Cooley, to kind of sort of come up with an idea, and I thought we did come up with one. And I didn't get an opportunity to make the Recreation Board meeting day, because I have work requirements, but I was pretty much informed that that, that the idea that we came up with, that everyone was so in favor of, was pretty much a no-go at this point. And I was just baffled by it, to be honest with you.
And no park, no association, they contract two fields down there. And the other two fields, once again, are not under contract, never have been, and they're just sitting there wasting away. I sent the Chairman pictures of the holes in the field, because if you don't have a tenant somewhere, and the other place uses it as a storage bin, then they don't care as much, and they don't look out as much for those fields as they do the ones that they have under contract. And so, yeah, I understand you all just getting it, but we've been going round and round, and we've been, you know, parents showed up at the rec board meeting, voiced their opinion. They was told one thing, and then when they left, things changed on that end. We come in, and we sit down, once again, we're told one thing. And before we could leave the building, it seems like the other association was in the meeting, because they put on their website, they're gonna try to offer the same thing that we're offering again. And then things changed again. So it's definitely new to you all, but this is something that we've been going round and round with those guys over at the rec board for, like I say, ever since pretty much September, when Canard blew the whistle on some of the wrongdoings that was going on down there. And from that standpoint, we've been kind of going on and on, and people telling us one thing, and not delivering on the things that they tell the parents. And so I do understand where you all at, as it relates to getting the information now. But if there's any kind of way you all can consider giving us some kind of idea, maybe not tonight, but giving us some kind of idea whether or not we will be able to have a place for those 120 parents that was displaced by the form, by the other association, and the other parents in the county that want to participate in our, in this type of program, because they have been displaced at this point.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, I think, if nothing else, you got the board's attention, and we will get with whoever whom we need to get to and try to come up with some fair and equitable solution. And that's, I think that's the best I can offer, unless somebody's got something they wanna move. And I'm thinking they ain't moving, so thank you so much. Do we have any commissioner needs to make a comment, like to make a comment? The Chairman has no comments. County manager, you have any comments you'd like to share with us?
No, sir.
County attorney, you have any comments you'd like to share with us?
No, sir.
Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, February 4th at 9:00 a.m., a regular board meeting. The meeting for Tuesday, February 18th at 6:30 p.m. has been canceled. Why don't we do that? Is that a holiday? I know we canceled, but I thought we was gonna have it, wasn't we gonna announce another time? Or is that not true? Did the board wanna do the, double it up on March 4th at the 9:00 a.m. meeting? I mean, we can do that without a motion. I'll just, we'll just cancel one to add to it.
We'll move those items to the March 4th agenda.
Okay. I just want everybody to know. Okay. We, the meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 6:30 p.m. has been canceled because of the spring break. We have some amongst us that have children, they take spring break, and staff. Tuesday, March 4th, 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, March 18th, at 6:30 p.m., are regular board meetings. No other business coming forward to the board. Somebody move, we adjourn. So move. Everybody move from District 3, second from District 1. Any further discussion? Only favor raise your right hand. Thank you.